Good evening, everyone. Welcome you to the January 4th, 2021, annual reorganization meeting of the Lacey Township Board of Education. I call this meeting to order and I ask you to join me, please, in saluting our flag.
We stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of the reorganization meeting was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and The Beacon on January 16, 2020, and amended on December 17, 2020, and by posting the notice in the Forkett River and Lenoka Harbor post offices, and by filing a copy of the notice with a Lacey Township clerk as required by the open public meeting law. At this time, it is my distinct privilege to bestow the oath of office on our two newly elected board members. We will ask Ms. Claus to please raise your right hand and read the oath as it has been provided to you.
Okay. I, Kim Claus, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Kim Claus, do solemnly affirm that I possess the qualification prescribed by law for the office of the member of the Board of Education, and I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations, Mrs. Claus.
Thank you.
Welcome to the Lacey Township Board of Education.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Polino, I invite you, sir, to please raise your right hand and read the oath as it has been presented to you.
Good evening. I, Frank Polino, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of New Jersey, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Frank Polino, do solemnly affirm that I possess the qualification prescribed by law for the office of member of Board of Education, that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Welcome back, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, I would call the very first official roll call of the Board of Education as it is constituted for the 2021 calendar year. Mrs. DeSensa.
Present.
Mrs. Downing.
Present.
Mrs. Claus.
Here.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Present.
Mr. Polino.
Present.
Mr. Peters.
Present.
Mr. Scanlon. Mr. Scanlon, are you there, sir? I think you're muted.
Excuse me, I was muted here.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. At this time, I would call, please, for nominations for the office of Board President. When all nominations have been made, a member will move to close the nominations and the Board of President will be elected by roll call vote. Just a note that all that is required for a nomination is the nomination itself, there is no second that is required. Are there any nominations for the office of Board President?
Would like to nominate Donna McAvoy.
Second.
Nominated by Mr. Polino. Are there any other nominations for Board President?
Motion to close.
Motion to close, Mrs. DeSensa, a second, please.
Second.
Second.
I believe it's first. So this is the roll call vote for election of Donna McAvoy as Board President. Mrs. DeSensa.
Abstain.
Mrs. Downing.
I'm gonna vote yes, Mrs. McAvoy and I had a discussion and we talked about some concerns, but I'll vote yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Claus.
Abstain.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Congratulations, Mrs. McAvoy. It is my distinct privilege to turn the reins of this meeting over to you to proceed with the nomination and election of Board Vice President. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to call for nominations for the office of the Board Vice President, and I would like to nominate Mr. Polino as the Board Vice President.
I'll second that nomination.
Are there any other nominations?
Motion to close.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. DeGeorge.
May I have a, please, I need a second on the close of nominations, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mrs. Downing. Roll call for Mr. Frank Polino as Board Vice President. Mrs. DeSensa.
Abstain.
Mrs. Downing.
I'll vote yes.
Mrs. Claus.
I'm gonna abstain.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Polino.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
At this time, we'll have the annual school ethics training.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Sanu Dev here from Law Firm at Kate Hart in Schatzer. Happy New Year to everyone and wanted to say a special hi to Ms. Claus since we haven't met yet in person, but everyone else I've met, so I appreciate, you know, being here and I'll be doing the annual ethics training. I believe you should already have copies of the School Ethics Act and the Code of Ethics. I will be referring to them from time to time in the presentation and I'll be putting up some of the language from the provisions as we go through the presentation and then, of course, we'll have copies for you afterwards. I know that for some of the more seasoned board members, this will be a good review and then, of course, for new board member, this is definitely something that is a priority. So I'm going to share my screen and let me know in a second if you're not able to see it. All right, good. So the two main laws that govern school ethics is, of course, the School Ethics Act, the citation is right there, and the Code of Ethics. This is what governs all conduct involving ethics regarding board members as well as any school official, so that basically encompasses anybody who is an employee of the school district. And I've given you the link there to the state's website where they have the entirety of the statutes for your perusal whenever, you know, you have time to review it, as well as in addition to today's training. Just a little bit of background, the School Ethics Commission is the body that is responsible for administering and making sure that the Code of Ethics and the School Ethics Act are followed. It is an arm of the state. It is governed through the Department of Education, but it is a nine-member body. They have the power to issue what's called advisory opinions. They receive complaints if a member of the public or any individual believes that there has been a violation of the School Ethics Act or the Code of Ethics. They can file that with the SEC. And the SEC is also the entity that's required to retain your disclosure statements that you will be or you are required to file every year. And they, again, are responsible for enforcing the School Ethics Act and the Code of Ethics. While this particular provision 18A:12-2 is not necessarily part of the School Ethics Act or the School or the Code of Ethics, I want you to be aware of it because sometimes there are conflicts of interest that arise as a result of this statute. And this statute basically says that any current Board of Education member cannot have any interested contracts or claims directly or indirectly with the Board. And, you know, that, in the grand scheme of things, could look like if they were an employee of the district, you cannot then be an employee and be on the Board of Education at the same time. If you own a company or have an interest in a company that has a contract with the Board, you cannot also be a Board member at the same time. That's what this does. I just want you to be aware of it because while it's not officially part of the School Ethics Act or the Code of Ethics, it is something you have to be cognizant about. Key points of the School Ethics Act and the Code of Ethics is that, you know, you, you as a Board member are always responsible to identify any conflicts or potential conflicts and you always have the duty to avoid them. And you must always be careful what you say and what you write. This includes emails, anything you put on social media and text messages and other electronic communication. I think, you know, especially, you know, in the age of COVID right now, a lot of communication is not traditionally by telephone or in person and we are communicating more through electronic means. But you also want to be mindful of what you are doing electronically and also on social media platforms. Just be aware that you could be recorded at any time and that as a Board member and as a, you know, member of the community who holds this office, you could be recorded at any time. And, you know, when in doubt, if you feel that there could be a conflict, don't do it and ask for a legal opinion. You know, I, one of my responsibilities as the Board Attorney is to help you navigate some of these issues, but also the SEC that we talked about a few slides before also has the ability to issue an advisory opinion. You can actually write to the School Ethics Commission and say, these are the certain facts, is this a potential violation? Or can I still do X, Y, or Z? Types of conflicts that are common: direct financial gain to you as a Board member, indirect financial gain to you as a Board member or the Board member's employer or family member, direct personal gain to the Board member or indirect personal gain to a Board member. When we talk about conflicts, oops, we want to ask these questions because that's how the SEC looks at the situation. Does the conduct in question violate the public trust? Or does it create a justifiable impression among the public that such trust is being violated? If the answer to any of these questions are yes, then you probably have a conflict and you shouldn't do it. And that's the overarching purpose of the School Ethics Act and the Code of Ethics is that you want to make sure that, oops, we are maintaining the public trust and that we're not creating an impression that the trust is being violated. You might hear sometimes the phrase, "It might not be a per se violation, but it could be perceived as a violation." And sometimes the perception of a violation could create more problems. I'm going to exit out of here and just pull up the exact language. So this is the Code of Ethics. With some, in 18A:12-24.1, not gonna read it verbatim because you've probably seen it already and you've already read it, but I do want to just highlight a few of the provisions that, you know, I end up having to deal with as a Board Attorney. Letter C, I will confine Board action to policymaking, planning, appraisal, and will help frame policies and plans only after the Board has consulted those who will be affected by them. And then D, they kind of go hand in hand. I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but to, together with my fellow Board members, to see that they are well-run. These two together are the backbone of you, your role as a Board member. You're not there to micromanage. Your role as a Board member is to see that the schools are running well, that the district is operating correctly, not to micromanage, not to get involved in the day-to-day kind of activity. And sometimes this can come up where there is some committees of some sort. I know your Board has certain standing committees, but then the district themselves will have committees that are solely related to, and that are traditionally run by administrators and staff members. For example, there's, some districts have a school calendar committee. That's not necessarily something a Board member would get involved in, but you as a Board member could be involved in, you know, higher above that, the policy setting aspect of it.
Mrs. Dev?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. If you're intending us to see the Code of Ethics, we can't see it. We can just see a minimized version of your slide deck.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is it? All right, hang on, let me, let me stop sharing it and reshare it again. Thank you for letting me know. Can you see it now?
That is better.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, let me, I'll try to, there we go. Okay, so I was talking about 18A:12-24.1, C and D. Letter E is that a Board member recognizes that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the Board. This is an important one, too, because I think, and I hope that you recognize that you as an individual Board member can't take action. The Board only takes action when they convene a properly noticed meeting and have a motion that's seconded and then the Board votes on it. That is Board action. And so you want to make sure that as a Board member, you are not saying or doing anything that would give the impression that it is an action of the full Board. Of course, if, you know, the Board has taken action already at a Board meeting and someone asks you, you know, what happened on this particular motion on the agenda, you can, you can let them know because the action had already been taken formally by the Board. F is pretty self-explanatory that a Board member will refuse to surrender independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends. G, holding confidential all matters pertaining to the school if disclosed would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, you will provide accurate information and make sure that it is in concert with fellow Board members and interpret it to the staff, the aspirations of the community for its school. So the confidentiality provision is very, very important because, of course, you know, as Board members, you will be participating in private sessions of the Board that may touch upon personnel matters, student issues, negotiations, other contract issues that need to be held in close confidence. And for example, if you're in the middle of negotiating a contract, whether it's a labor contract or, you know, it's a contract with one of your vendors and, you know, has not been finalized, we certainly don't want any of that deliberation to be made public because that could compromise the position of the Board. And similarly with personnel issues and student issues, we want to make sure that those are all held confidentially because employees and students have certain rights to confidentiality. And that's not also limited to just the Board meetings. As in the context of your position as a Board member, you will be receiving information, whether it's orally or in an email or a memo that talks about sensitive and confidential matters and you as a Board member must maintain that confidentiality. H is regarding the appointment of personnel after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer. And this one is important because as a Board member, you cannot make a recommendation for somebody to take a position. For example, you can't say, "I want Person A to be the principal of this school." There is a particular statute in the school regulations that talk about how personnel recommendations have to come through the chief school administrator, your superintendent. The superintendent is the only person who has the authority to make the recommendation to the full Board for the filling of personnel. Of course, you know, the Board is responsible for the superintendent and that's a little bit different. That's the only situation where the recommendation would come from the Board itself is for the superintendent. I, pretty self-explanatory regarding supporting and protecting school personnel and proper performance of their duties. J, referring all complaints to the chief administrative officer, your superintendent, and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of administrative solution. This usually happens when, you know, a parent or a member of the public may see you in a setting that's not a Board meeting, maybe at the supermarket or at a park or some community function and ask, you know, like, "I'm having this problem about X, Y, and Z." And, you know, "I know you're a Board member, so, you know, what can you do about that?" And the proper response is, "Well, you know, thank you so-and-so for letting me know. Unfortunately, I'm not able to act on that as an individual Board member. I can't micromanage the schools, but I will, you know, refer this to the superintendent and someone will be in touch with you." And, you know, there are, there is a chain of command. Typically, if it involves an issue with a teacher, the parent should go to the teacher first, then the school principal, and so on. Sometimes parents are not aware of it. They think that Board members are able to give them a response immediately or, you know, take that type of action that they're looking for and that's not necessarily true. So whenever there's any sort of complaint or request, I think that you should refer that to the superintendent. Now, can everyone see this other page now? The Conflicts of Interest, it says at the top?
Yes, we're good.
Okay, great, all right, let me make that a little bit bigger. This is the exact language from the School Ethics Act. A lot of this is overlapping with the Code, the Code of Ethics. You can't have any interest in a business organization that is in substantial conflict with your duties as a Board member. You can't use your position for unwarranted privileges, advantages, or employment for yourself, members of your immediate family, or others. The others portion is important because I just want you to be aware that School Ethics Act is not necessarily confined to just yourself and immediate family members. It can extend to other relatives or even non-relatives. There could be situations where there are individuals who are residing in your home that may not be related to you, but they would fit into this other category. I think there are certain particularities when it comes to Board members taking volunteer positions with, within the district. You have to make sure that it's not prejudicing your independent judgment. Sometimes this comes about when Board members, prior to becoming Board members, they've been involved in PTAs or PTOs and things like that and they want to continue that or they've been involved in, you know, volunteering, selling tickets for the school play and things of that nature. So just be mindful that even though you might not be compensated for your time, they, depending on the level of involvement that you have, depending on the level of responsibility that you have, the level at which a school district employee has discretion over you or that you have control over them may be dispositive on whether or not it is a conflict. So just be mindful of that. I think everything else is pretty self-explanatory. So I'm gonna stop this and go back to my slide. Okay. Let me know if you cannot see this. So again, the overriding questions that you always want to ask with regard to school ethics is, is the conduct in question violating the public trust? Or would it create a justifiable impression among the public that such trust is being violated? This is a School Ethics Advisory Opinion, A 2417. This had to do with a question from a Board member to the School Ethics Commission regarding their involvement in negotiations because either they themselves were in a union in another school district or they had a family member, part of a union, regardless of whether it was in the same district or in another district. And this is a handy chart to refer to if you feel that there could be a conflict regarding someone you know or someone who's related to you that's in a union of this district or a statewide district. I'm not gonna, you know, sit here and dissect every single permutation, but I want you to be aware of this, that even though the person in question may be in a union or an association in a different district, it still could have implications with regard to your conflict and involvement in negotiations in this district. Electronic communication concerns, again, it can't be overstated that a lot of our communications now are through emails and just clicking forward or clicking reply all. You want to be very mindful of what you are putting in emails and text messages. They can be easily forwarded. And what you write on your personal social media account is not considered private. Some people are under the mistaken understanding that if you have your Facebook account set to just friends, then it's considered private and no one can reprimand you for it or no one can criticize you for it, but that's not true. And everything can be screenshotted, too. So you send a text message to someone, you might think that it's in confidence, but the next thing you know, it's being screenshotted and then it, you know, ends up on Instagram or Twitter or whatever it is. And it lasts forever. There's a lot of things on the internet that is there for a long time, if not for eternity. So just be very mindful of what content you are putting out there and what communications are being done electronically. There is a School Ethics Commission Advisory Opinion from 2007. I know it seems that it's a little old, but this is the prevailing opinion regarding about a Board member's action versus opinion as a private citizen versus a Board member. And this opinion arose from concerns of a Board of Education member who, you know, wanted to express their private opinion about a, I shouldn't say private, their personal opinion about a political matter in the community. And they wanted to express this personal opinion in the local newspaper by writing a letter to the editor. And the Board member wanted to make sure that they could express themselves under the First Amendment, right, to free speech, but not run afoul to the School Ethics Commission's Code of Ethics and the School Ethics Act. And what the School Ethics Commission said is that, you know, if you are wanting to make- wanting to make a personal opinion, you have to make it clear that you are not saying that or writing that or opining that on behalf of the board. You have to identify yourself as the person who is holding the opinion. You do have to say that you are a board member, but that it's not been authorized by the board. So in this particular case, the SEC told the board member that when you write the letter, you have to say that it's not authorized by the board and it's not written on behalf of the board and that the information that is being shared through the opinion must not contain confidential information and it must be accurate. We talked about your obligation to maintain confidentiality. So you can't be expressing a personal opinion but sharing confidential information of the board. You have to make sure that if you are sharing information that's related to the board, it must be accurate. And you have to ensure that your private action does not compromise the board. And that last provision, compromise the board, is still up for interpretation. The Ethics Commission hasn't given us a bright line rule on what does it mean to compromise the board. But in one particular case, it involved a board member who believed to have been given, giving their personal opinions about the school budget. And they unfortunately shared inaccurate information. And what ended up happening is that the budget was defeated. And so as a result, the School Ethics Commission opined that the board member's action in that regard did compromise the board. You also want to consider putting disclaimers when you are making such statements, whether it's on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, LinkedIn. If you're making a personal opinion, it is better to do it on your personal social media accounts and not one that you may have for board business only. But again, as I said earlier, your your personal social media account is not necessarily private. So you want to be careful, again, what you're saying on there. And you want to make sure that if you're using a personal social media account, that you are not indicating your position as a board member. And you can't issue an endorsement. So in the in the particular SEC case, it involves an endorsement of a local person for office. And the SEC said, well, you can't use your Board of Education Twitter account and say that you are endorsing such and such person because that gives the impression that you are making this endorsement as a board member and potentially on behalf of the full board, which may not have been the intention, but that it gives the perception. This is an example of a disclaimer. You know, this endorsement is as a private citizen and not as a member of the local Board of Education, nor is the endorsement on behalf of the entire board. That's the end of my presentation. Are there any questions from board members? I'm going to take the screen off. No? Okay.
Thank you, Senator.
You're welcome. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Senator. Mr. DeGeorge, did you have something to share?
Yes, a couple of things. Thank you, Mrs. McAvoy. First, the presentation that we saw, I appreciate that, Ms. Dev, very much. Great job, as always. I'll be sharing a PDF of that presentation tomorrow morning to all the board members. Second, each board member in the packet that they received today has what's called an acknowledgement of receipt related specifically to the Code of Ethics that was also in your packet. At your earliest convenience, each of you, including administrators, sign date and return that to me at the board office as soon as you possibly can. And finally, we spoke about the conflict, right? Sony did a great job of bringing that to our attention. Also, in your packet is what is called a Conflict of Interest questionnaire. We developed this a few years ago to help board members identify conflicts that they may not know that they have. So for sitting board members, it's another opportunity to kind of go through in conjunction with the slide deck that I'll give you tomorrow to reexamine your position on what you may or may not be conflicted on. Certainly, in Mrs. Claus's case, it will be her first attempt at this. So go through and use, again, the slide deck in conjunction with it to try to identify any conflict. Now, the answer could be no. There could be no conflicts at all. But my best professional advice would be if you have any doubt whatsoever, whether something you are involved in or a position you intend to hold may present a potential conflict for you, please call me. You and I will talk about that individually, and if need be, we will have a call placed to the board attorney, and she will help us kind of sort it through. But it's important for us to identify it because before every regular meeting, it is our job collectively to identify any possible conflicts on a specific agenda so that we don't make a mistake inadvertently. All right? That is pretty much what I have. Mrs. McAvoy, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. DeGeorge. At this time, we are going to vote on items one through six. Code of Ethics, Combined Statement of Results, Parliamentary Procedure, the first read of the bylaw, Board Bylaws, Policies and Regulations, and the meeting schedule. We have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Any comments?
I do, if that's okay, Mrs. McAvoy, just a couple of things to bring to everyone's attention, including those members who have joined us from the public. Number four, the first read of a bylaw change. If you were with us about a year or a year and a half ago, the board amended that specific bylaw regarding committees to create a fourth committee, a facilities committee. This amendment sort of goes back to what happened before in that we will now have, go back to the three standing committees. To be clear, it is in no way to be construed that the facilities committee was in any way ineffective. It was not. It was a good committee. The overarching issue was that many of the things that we discussed at the facilities committee were also discussed at the finance committee. So it kind of became a little bit redundant and inefficient. So we talked about it and decided to go back to three committees. And we're confident that that will be a little bit more efficient for us as a board. Second, the scheduled meetings, those who have taken a look at it already will note that the regular meetings have moved from the third Monday, the third Thursday of each month. So please, those who are used to the Monday meetings, please take special note to have this calendar at hand for you. It's going to be on the website, of course. It will be advertised in the papers by the end of this week. So everybody will know, but I want to make sure that everyone out there knows that the meetings are going to change to the third Thursday, and it does not conflict in any way with anything that is going on with the governing body in town. That's all I have, Mrs. McAvoy.
Thank you, Mr. DeGeorge. If there is no other comments, can we have a roll?
I have a question. Yeah, so the 0155 policy, that's, we're doing front and back as the same policy?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That was my question. Thank you.
Yes, and then for your edification, Ms. Claus, at every meeting, we have the first read and the second read of policies. This is the first time. It is required to have two readings or presentations. So on the regular January meeting on the 21st, we'll re-present this for second read and adoption. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, can I give one?
I have a question. In regard to policy 0155, I would like, if possible, for the policy committee to really delve into this. There are, as I read it, and I probably just never noticed it before, but there are a couple paragraphs that are very vague, and I think it could tie us up into some problems down the line. So I will let, who's the chair of policy? Now, Mr. Peters?
Yes.
I'll let you and Mr. Peters know my concerns, and maybe we could look at it closer before the second reading.
Great.
I also had the same concerns.
Me, too.
Great. Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
All right, so again, this is for resolutions one through six.
Yes, on one, two, three, and six, and nay on four and five.
Mrs. Downing.
I'm voting yes, and I've noted my concern about the one, but I'm still voting yes.
Noted. Mrs. Claus.
I will vote yes, and I'm, I am concerned about number four, so if we can just make note of that.
Sure, absolutely, yep.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes. Yes.
Motion's carried. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, affected immediately, standing and the ad hoc committees. Finance and Operations, Mr. Scanlon will be the chairperson, and myself and Mr. Peters will be on the committee. The Policy Committee, Mr. Peters will be the chairperson, Mrs. DeSenza and Mrs. Claus will be on the committee. The Curriculum Committee, Mrs. Downing will be the chairperson, myself and Mr. Polino will be on the committee. We have an ad hoc committee for redistricting. Myself, Mrs. Downing, and Mrs. Claus will be on the committee. The negotiations for the LTEA and for the Child Study Team Association will be Mr. Scanlon as the chairperson, Mrs. DeSenza, and Mr. Polino. The NJSBA delegate will be myself, and the Ocean County School Board will be Mr. Peters. At this time, I'd like to open up public comments, if there are any. An audience member wishing to make a comment shall raise his or her hand and when called upon, shall state their name, address, or affiliation, and intention to make a statement. Comments shall be addressed to the board president. Comments shall be made on one issue at a time. Comments shall be limited to five minutes. No audience member will be recognized twice until all who wish to comment have been recognized. And please raise your hand, and Mr. Lidle will let us know if there's any comments.
Thank you, Mrs. McAvoy. Right now, if anybody from public would like to comment, you can raise your hand by using that feature on your Zoom app, or if you're calling in by telephone, dial star nine. And at this time, we'll recognize Mr. Rizzoli. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
The name, Tony Rizzoli, Sunrise Beach. First off, congratulations to the new member. Wish you the best of luck. You're going to need it. The other thing I'd like to say is congratulations to the new president. You're going to need it, too. In reference to the last meeting, I was unable to be in, to be there to make the comments, just so you know. I had a, I had a problem with some of the language in one of the policies. Policy 5111, which I'll be bringing up at the next meeting in reference to F1 visas and J1 visa students. So the policy committee should look at those before I bring up my concerns. The other thing I had a question was, or concern about, is, if I may, Board President, can I address Mr. Scanlon?
I would like to get advice on that. Dr. Clark, is that permissible?
Mr. Rizzoli, can you give us an idea of what it is in reference to?
Yeah, conflicts of dates.
Well, I'm fairly certain Mrs. McAvoy, as the board president, can answer the question, but if she can't...
Very good. Mr. Scanlon and Mr. Peters both serve on township committee meetings, township committee members in other capacities. For example, Mr. Scanlon tonight, as far as I know, should be at a Board of Adjustment meeting. I understand that we're switching the meetings from Mondays to Thursdays, but I would also like Mr. Scanlon and Mr. Peters to bring forward to you the dates of their other obligations in town on on committees that they serve, so that they do not have the conflict of interest or conflict of dates with the Board of Education and and also their other township committee response, township committees' responsibilities. We want to have their full interest present and their input at the Board of Education. And as a taxpayer, I want their full interest and their, and their attention at the other committees that they serve on in in their township, in their capacity. And I like to thank them for their service on the committees that they do serve. So just looking forward, I understand that you, you're looking to do that, but you may want to look a little deeper to service these two individuals.
Mr. Rizzoli, every board member was called, and every board member did check for conflicts. And it was unanimous, all seven board members will be available for every board meeting on a Thursday. But we appreciate, we appreciate your concern. Thank you.
Okay, well, that's good to know. I did have some concerns in reference to that. The other thing that I'd like those two individuals especially to consider, and also Mr. DeGeorge, if there is any, any kind of a, a situation that does come up in the future that may be of a potential ethics conflict that, you know, you really look at it hard to make sure that you're not in violation of anything that you should be. I'll give you two things that I'm kind of concerned about that may come up in the future. With Mr. Peters, it's vaccinations, when the vaccinations will be occurring with this COVID thing in town and how it affects our students, our teachers, dates, things like that. And with Mr., with Mr. Scanlon, if, in fact, we get to the point because our enrollment is going down so much that we, it's decided that school property should be sold, and it does reach the Board of Adjustment, that there would not, in effect, be any ethics situations. And I'm only saying this off the cuff, you know, outside of the box, and I'm just bringing it up for future reference.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rizzoli. And Mr. DeGeorge does, before every meeting, go through conflicts with each board member. So thank you for bringing that to our attention, and you'll make sure we're aware of that if that happens.
Other than that, good luck. Have a nice year. I'll be seeing you in the future.
Okay, we're looking forward to that. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Lidle?
Mrs. McAvoy, seeing none.
Thank you. We'll close public comment. At this time, Doc...
Mrs. McAvoy, can I also say, for those who were here the last time, there were no, I received no questions or comments via the Google Form platform. So I wanted to let folks know in case they were wondering that they were non-submitted today. Okay?
Great. Thank you for that. At this time, we'll have superintendent comments, if there are any. Dr. Clark?
Yes, thank you, President McAvoy. I just wanted to start by wishing everybody a Happy New Year. Thank you to Ms. Dev for that really good presentation on ethics. Congratulations and welcome back to Mr. Polino. And congratulations and welcome to Mrs. Claus, looking forward to working with the full board and with the two of you as well. And then finally, I just wanted to also reiterate, Mrs. McAvoy, what you said, that we didn't take lightly changing the board meetings from Mondays to Thursdays. We did it for a variety of reasons, but we certainly did check to make sure that we weren't conflicting with any other meetings that were going on, especially with the township. And so I just wanted to go on record as saying that. But, Mr. Rizzoli, thank you for bringing up your concerns, and we'll certainly look to those in the future. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have board comments, if there are any. Mrs. Claus, we'll start with you, please.
I just want to say thank you. I have something prepared. I would like to say thank you to the Lacey community for your overwhelming support in this past election. I'm extremely grateful. Over the past four months, I've...
Over the past four months, I've learned a lot about our district from our community, and I am hopeful together we can make the changes that will make a difference. I am asking the board and administration to be open to new ideas. With more budget cuts on the way, now's the time to think out of the box and explore new avenues to bring money into the district. Some ideas could include redistricting and adding the pre-K program with the help of the pre-K expansion grant, increase revenue with food services, explore ways to expand OCC Academy to add to district students for a fee, and also promoting all extracurricular activities and sports that charge an admission, such as the drama club and wrestling. While governing, the strategic plan will be a top priority, as well as other community concerns, such as better test scores, school ranking, COVID concerns, improved planning for college, vocational school, military, and overall communication with the guidance department starting at freshman year, increased mental health programs, and increased special attention. Over the next three years, I will be committed, dedicated, will listen and work side by side with the administration and the board. Again, I would like to thank everyone who supported me during my campaign. I'm excited to devote my time to the Lacey Township. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Claus.
Yeah.
Mrs. DeSenza, please.
Yes, thank you. Happy New Year, I hope, to everyone. 2020 was an extraordinarily difficult year. My condolences to all who lost family, friends, and neighbors this past year. I know I've read too many obituaries and been to too many funerals. The board owes a big thank you to Dr. Clark and Mr. Decker for navigating the district through this tumultuous year of the pandemic, and to Mr. DeGeorge and Ms. Sylvia for navigating us through all the financial changes and challenges that the governor threw at us on a daily basis, and it's still ongoing. So here we go, forward into the new year 2021. I also want to thank Mrs. McAvoy for her efforts in putting together all the committees in a timely manner so that we can all dive right into our new duties. I voted no on the revision to policy 0155 because it is just the old version of what it was before it was changed last year, and here's an example why. The policy spells out topics for each committee, but no real duties and responsibilities. For example, under Finance Committee, the policy should read something to the effect, responsible for reviewing all monthly vouchers, bills, and contracts, but it does not. I review all the bills on my own, but this should be a committee responsibility, and it should be in writing. And I don't consider this chore optional. Without having it in writing, no one is ever required to do it. And this is not just my suggestion out of the blue. In 2006, the county superintendent told me this should be a function and responsibility of a board finance committee. In 2006, I wasn't even a board member back then, but I took an interest in policy. There were also other ambiguous passages in the policy as written, and I cannot say yes to it until it's more accurate. And I even discussed some of this with Mrs. Downing, and she had some of the same concerns that I did. Another example is that we assign alternates to each committee, but that practice is not specified in the policy. And here's another one. As of yesterday, we had eight board members. Mr. Riggs's email account was still open and usable, and I noticed Mrs. Claus also had an open school email account yesterday, before she was sworn in. When I got on the board in 2015, I didn't get an active school email account for nearly a month. No one even told me mine was opened, and I was using my personal email for weeks. Then last year, through two Alpa requests for email logs, dates on certain items indicated that both Mr. Claus in 2018 had his email box open into year 2019 as a private citizen, and Mr. Giordano in 2019 had his email box open into year 2020 as a private citizen. The board needs a bylaw to state when old emails get closed, when the new member is sworn in and gets the new email opened after the new board member is sworn in. A person can only be a board member during their official term. Once it's up, no one should have continued access to the confidential student, employee, and legal matters that are within their email boxes. If a former board member needs to be contacted for any reason by the district, their personal email should be on file for that use. Bylaw policy should reflect what we actually do, and the board should be consistent with such practices. And as Mr. DeGeorge mentioned, I hope the public notes that the board has changed all of our monthly business meeting schedules to the third Thursday of the month for a variety of reasons. It's also a schedule that has no holidays, so all of the 2020, 2021 meetings will fall on Thursdays. And there is no clash with the Township Committee meetings because they meet on the second and fourth Thursdays. So tonight begins my sixth year on this board. It is the last year of my second term. I'd like to thank all who have allowed me the privilege to serve this district, and thank you to the public for tuning in tonight. Our next and first business meeting of the year will be in person, hopefully at the lecture hall on Thursday, January 21st at 6:00 PM. See you then.
Thank you, Mrs. DeSenza.
Mrs. McAvoy, can I just, just a clarification? First of all, Mrs. Sence, as always, I appreciate everything you say and do, and your commitment to this board is unquestioned. But regarding the email accounts for Mr. Riggs and for Mrs. Claus, Mr. Riggs is still a board member until right now. And one of the most, so his account will be closed or deactivated to him as of now. However, as I mentioned to you once before, we have to keep the account open to, say, me, for instance, so that I can go through and see if there are any kind of important emails that might come through for a little bit of time, so we don't just close it and for that. And then Mrs. Claus's email is created, but the account is not accessible to her until tomorrow. So it's a subtle but very important distinction that there was just no way for Mrs. Claus to.
Okay.
Now, today until tomorrow, and there will be no way that Mr. Riggs will be able to do the same starting.
But I'd like to see that in policy, Patrick.
Sure, yeah, I mean, the policy notwithstanding, that is what actually will happen. I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that.
Okay, I just think it should be written down somewhere.
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Peters, do you have any comments tonight?
I do. Thank you, President McAvoy. First, I'd like to thank ex-president Downing for what she did for all those years. Thank you very much for your dedication that we did. I'd like to congratulate Ms. Claus and Mr. Polino back into the board full-time and ready to go. Mr. Senta, also, I have a question in your comments.
Sure.
Since we're doing a Zoom meeting, the only way she could join the Zoom meeting was through an email. So she had to have an email account addressed to her to attend this as a panelist opposed to an attendee.
I understand.
Okay, so she had to have her email to, I have access to the meeting tonight. Mr. Rizzoli, yes, you are correct. I do perform on another board in town, on the health, the Board of Health for Lacey Township. And as always, if there's a conflict during a school board meeting or a board of health meeting, I can abstain on a vote that is there. And also, when I ran for my campaign for Lacey School Board, it was students first and the taxpayer second. And I continue with five on that, and if something comes in, there are alternatives that could attend that board of health meeting if I could not make it to school board, obviously come first. Happy New Year, everybody, and thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you. Mrs. Downing, comments, please? Mrs. Downing, you're frozen. I could.
Is it coming back?
Mrs. Downing, do you hear me? Okay, we don't hear you. No. I'm going to skip to Mr. Scanlon, and then we'll come back to you. Okay. Mr. Scanlon?
Good evening. First, I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Hopefully, we're looking forward to a year that's far better in 2021. I'd like to thank Mrs. Downing for her leadership and help last year. As a new board member, I appreciated her reaching out to me, and I needed all the assistance I could get, and I am glad to say I got it. I'd like to welcome Kim Claus to the board. Everybody always talks about, oh, how hard and everything it's going to be. It really is more, I find it more enjoyable than hard. It is time-consuming at times, but I think you'll enjoy the involvement. I'd like to congratulate Donna McAvoy and Frank Polino for their positions as president and vice president. Look forward to your leadership. And I'd also like to just comment on my position on the zoning board of adjustment in town. I've been assured by attorneys, by on the board of adjustment and on the school board, that there is no conflict. One meeting a year now that we've changed to Thursdays, and that's tonight. Tonight is the only time the school board meets on a Monday, the first Monday night of the month. And as soon as we're done here, I am going to go right over to the, to the board of adjustment and pick up wherever they are. Also, really, there's nothing that is school board matters that come before that board. So I can assure Mr. Rizzoli that there's no conflict there. And thank you for the opportunity to address that.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Mrs. Downing, do you? No, I don't think any of us hear you. Okay. Um, all right. Let's go on then, Mr. Polino.
Mrs. McAvoy, maybe, maybe we can suggest to her to dial in using her phone instead of use the computer audio.
Right. Mrs. Downing, do you want to try to dial in for comments? You want, okay. Mr. Polino?
Yes, good evening. First of all, I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. I hope they had a safe and healthy holiday season. Want to welcome Ms. Claus to the board. Want to wish all our members a good, hard-working New Year. I want to thank all those that supported me in this past election, who brought me back to the board. Eager to get started on some new special ed curriculum and moving forward with that and get some things going this year. I'm excited about certain things that are going to be happening with the board and looking at the committees. Really, that's about all I have. I just wish everybody, you know, a healthy year. Hopefully, we're going to get back to some type of normalcy. You know, I just want to say, if you have the opportunity of getting a COVID vaccine and you're a little hesitant, I've had my first dose probably about a week, so now I had no reaction to it. But, you know, check with your doctor if you're able to get it. You know, please go ahead and get it. At that, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Downing is back in.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hallelujah. Sorry about that. I just want to, very quickly, I want to congratulate Frank and Kim on their election to the board. Kim, I'm really looking forward to working with you this year, and Frank, for another couple of years. Ms. Dev, your presentation for the school ethics, I thought was wonderful, very thorough, and I appreciate all the details that you pointed out, and I thought it was very good. Thank you. I want to wish Donna and Frank being the president and vice president. And I want to wish everyone out there a very happy, healthy, and hopefully fun 2021.
Thank you, Mrs. Downing. And I'll go last. I agree with Mrs. Downing, Ms. Dev, that was the most comprehensive ethics training that I've seen. So thank you very much. Mrs. Downing, thank you for your year last year serving as president, and I plan on using you a lot for advice and to navigate the year. So hopefully, you'll answer the phone when I call you. Mrs. Claus and Mr. Polino, I'm looking forward to working with both you and your ideas and everybody working together as a whole. And I'm very excited to serve as the president and have Mr. Polino as the vice president, and I'm looking forward to a great year. And that's all I have to say. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
Motion.
Mrs. McAvoy, before we adjourn, I would be remiss if I didn't make two comments. I forgot to thank Mrs. Downing for the past year as board president. Her and I spoke a whole lot, and her leadership is, was very welcome. And Mrs. McAvoy, now it's your turn. So I suspect that we're going to be talking a lot. So welcome to you as board president, and welcome to Mr. Polino as vice president. So, as if I didn't say those two things.
Thank you. Okay, a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Okay, this is DeSenza and Mrs. Downing, first and second. Okay, roll call, or do we just all say?
All in favor.
All in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Good night, everybody.
We are adjourned.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Good night.
Good night.